I would like to call to order the work session of the Norfolk School Board for Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. I welcome each of you present here this evening, and a quorum is present to transact the business of the school board. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Inge.
Present.
Martin.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Thomas.
Yeah.
DeCalagiro.
Present.
We will begin today's meeting with Agenda Item 2.01, School Board Goal Five, enter in Measures One and Tool and Two. Dr. Poehl, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, DeCalagiro, Vice Chair, Ms. Thomas, Members of the Board, Dr. Birdsong. As Mr. DeCalagiro said, I'm going to be reviewing School Board Goal Five, Measures One and Measures Two. So as a reminder, Goal Five is focused on graduates receiving advanced studies diplomas, and the goal is to meet the state average by the class of 2027. So looking at 5.1 specifically, it's the measure looking at our 2027 cohort, and the goal is to have them at 47% by the end of this quarter based off of our metrics. So as the data show, there was a decline of .6 points from the second to third quarter of SY25. This places the 27 cohort off track of reaching the target of 47% by the end of the school year based on our metrics devised for this measure. And currently, the highest percentage the 2027 cohort can reach by the end of this year is 47% based off the metric devised for this measure. What's going well? The 27 cohort's failure rate in mathematics is 4.9 points better than the division average, and their failure rate in social studies is 7.1 points better than the vision average. So it's English and science is where we're seeing the concerns with the failure rates. What's not going well is there's been a decline of 1.8 points from the first quarter to the third quarter this year, and students in the 2027 cohort are 11 points below their target for quarter three. So next steps, and you'll notice on both of these, the next steps are consistent with what we're doing with both the cohorts, so I'll review on this one. Content offices will support high school student remediation efforts to ensure students earn verified credits. As you're aware, a large part of graduation is having that verified credit where you pass a class and pass the SOL test with it. Schools will provide students with opportunities to turn in missing work and make up work as they continue and finish out the school year. And school councils are reviewing course selections to ensure students are taking required courses to be eligible for the advanced studies diploma. And I will say that also dips all the way down to the middle school level, even though we're tracking through the 2027 cohort, as we talked about originally with this goal, that we're really focusing even on middle school to make sure that they're getting the courses they need so they enter high school on track. And then each content area continues to work this year and is planning for next year to continue providing targeted professional development to improve the instructional practices in alignment with best practices to ensure the students are successful in the courses required for the advanced studies diploma. Refining implementation of high-quality instructional materials, collaborative planning and best teaching practices to enhance student learning, and engaging in collaborative planning and instructional alignment to ensure consistency and coherence across grade levels. So I'll pause after this one and then go into Measure 5.2.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, may I suggest since 5.1 and 5.2, they're just different cohorts. Is it, I'd like, I do have several questions, but they pertain to both, so I want to defer mine until after 5.2.
Okay.
So unless anyone has anything specific about this.
All right.
Okay, let's move on to 5.2.
All right, sounds like a plan. So 5.2, again, same goal, and this measure is looking, focusing on the 2026 cohort. So these students are currently what we would consider 11th grader juniors or their third year into high school, and their goal is to hit 35% by the end of this school year. The data show there was a .1 point increase from the second to third quarter, and this continues to have the 26 cohort off track of reaching the 35% by the end of the base, end of the year based on these metrics. And currently, the highest percentage the 26 cohort can reach is 35%. What's going well? There was a slight increase from quarter two to quarter three with the 26 cohort, and the 26 cohort is 1.4 points above where they were for quarter three during the 23-24 school year. So we're seeing them at least still growing over the years, not as fast as we'd like, but they are showing improvement. What's not going well is that the 26 cohort is below the target by 5.2 points, and there was a slight increase in the percentage of students failing math by 1.1% and history by .9%. And then again, the next steps are the same as the next steps for the 27 cohort. So I'll pause there, and entertain any questions or comments the board has.
Madam Chair, how many students are in a cohort?
We have approximately 2,000 per grade level. I don't have the exact numbers with me, but that's pretty close.
So Dr. Poehl, entertain me for a moment here. So I did do some research. I do my research when you send me the documents here. So 2023, we had about 1,558 MPS students graduate, only 579 received advanced studies diplomas, about 37%. Then following school year 22-23, we had about 1,543 students graduate, 639 receive, that's 41%. I'm going backwards here, but keep following me. Sitting in, in 21-22, 1,632 students graduated of that 712 received advanced studies diploma. Now, we reversed that 43%, 43.6% in 21, 41.1% in 22, 37.1% in 23. So it is going down. What are some of the lessons that you've learned in the efforts that you're doing to try to increase access for students to actually be on track? As you quoted, English and science are the fail rates, correct?
For the 27 cohort right now, that's where it falls. So Mr. Inge, a lot of this is accredited to our COVID times when we shut down, and it put a lot of students off track. Our students now that are here in these cohorts were in middle school at that time. So, you know, we're looking to start to see a growth pattern again as we go into it. So a lot of it has to do when they were in middle school or their first year in high school, and maybe they were taking a foreign language course online, and it was a little bit more difficult, and they chose not to continue. Those are a lot of the data that we're seeing right here with the students that are in our upper cohorts right now.
Okay, follow-up questions to that. How is the district working to ensure all students, particularly in historically underserved communities, are getting access to advanced studies diplomas?
Sure. So every, every high school offers courses that meet the requirements for advanced studies diplomas. So when we do scheduling and when we do hiring for schools, it's based off student requests. So we take student requests in, and then we look at what teachers we need. So students, you know, are encouraged and requesting the languages, and those are being offered at all of our schools. We have in the past as well, if there was a need at a school where there might only be four or five students who are requesting a specific course that might have taken it, we've also done those via Zoom, where we've had a teacher teach from, teach from maybe Norview High School and Zoom into maybe Lake Taylor High School to make sure that that course is offered. Sometimes we'll find our smaller high schools have more constrictions on course offerings because they may not have as many students who are asking for enrollment just because they don't have as many students in the building. So we will make sure that we have that, and we've also increased our offerings through Virtual Virginia. So a student doesn't have to be in the Virtual Scholars Academy to take a course. If they have that need, they can also take a single course through Virtual Virginia to make sure that they have that ability to do it.
I have several other questions, but I definitely want to allow my other board colleague. Okay, all right, well, guess we're going to go with them then, right? Well, first off, I just wanted to check I got that data from the Department of Education. I like to cite my sources. So what changes or what are y'all doing for family engagement and the communications to increase awareness for the advanced study diplomas?
So a big part of our engagement with that is when students are enrolling in courses. Materials are sent home, parents have to sign off on what they're, what the students are registering for as well. And, you know, when we have open houses, the counselors and the principals will make parents aware of, you know, that we really want students to have access to everything they can. And again, though, this, it really comes down to student choice on where they, what they're going to sign up for in courses. But we do make them aware that this is a, an option, and it's, you know, it's a, it's a strong option to take for a college-bound student.
Excellent. Thank you so much there. And just looking ahead, as we look ahead to the new school year, and given the continued decline in ASD, advanced studies diplomas, what are some of the new initiatives and strategies that you and the administration are going to be using to increase and reengage students?
So a lot of what we've done this year already to put into place was to really focus on our students, again, at the middle school level and early high school levels, to ensure they understand the importance of the world language courses or the foreign language courses, what really is probably the biggest blockade for our students, because they, they need either three years of one or two and two.
Right.
And if they don't start it in middle school, or if they don't start it and continue it in ninth grade, that's where we're seeing where they, they will fall short. Or sometimes it's a lab science that they may need, so they may get to their senior year in that chemistry course. So we're making sure that there's additional tutoring opportunities in there, and we're doing a lot more with academic and career planning. So as they go through, that we're focusing on, on them with an advanced studies diploma. And if they're opting not to, then we're focusing on their career path to make sure that they're going to have some kind of a certification when they finish high school.
Okay. So, so what you're saying, I will make sure I'm hearing you correctly. So advanced studies diploma, it is an option for our students. Of course, they don't have to, they can go through and get the standard diploma if they choose to. So, and, but if those you are re-engaging, you're re-engaging those students, and if they want to, you're still offering them to come back and try to get the advanced studies diploma.
So I want to, I want to make sure I'm understanding your, your question correctly. So it, like, if they, if they've graduated, they can't come back and get it?
No, no, they haven't graduated.
Okay.
Yeah, those you are re-engaging students that may have, let's say, for example, a student did not come get their advanced studies diploma, whether they're on track to get it, but they're failing behind, as we, the English and science are failing. What are we doing to just re-engage those students? I know English, I mean, that was, that was, it was a hard subject for me at one time, you know, getting those nouns and verbs and everything together.
Yeah, so, so let me, so the metric that we use to gauge if they're going to receive the advanced studies is based on currently failing courses. So if a student is failing an English or a science course, there's already a lot in place for remediation and supports, because if they fail that course, they just won't graduate either. So it's, it's even more important that we're on track with that. But when we're talking, because the advanced studies, it's, as long as you've taken English nine, 10, 11, 12, there's no honors requirement or anything else for it. So this metric focuses on, on if they're failing or enrolled in specific courses that they would need to have. So the, the continued partnerships that we have with, with some, some, like university instructors that offer tutoring, and that, so you saw that in the budget time when we had funding for that, to make sure that we keep those available even after, you know, we, we didn't have the funding from ESAR, that, that we have that in the budget to maintain that for our students in our schools.
Okay, all right, awesome. Thank you so much. And last follow-up question that I have, and I promised Ms. Basine I'm going to give you time.
Thanks.
So next question is, for those students that are not, let's say they're failing an advanced studies diploma, they, and let's just say they don't get it, what are, do you have any data to show, you said you're giving them career paths, do you have any data to show that when they've graduated, they didn't get the advanced studies, they may have got the standard diploma, and they went into a career right out of high school?
So the, the only data we have is based off, off exit interviews about where they're going the following year. And I do want to be clear to whoever's watching as well, even, you know, if a student doesn't get advanced studies diploma, that does not mean they're no longer college-bound.
Of course.
Yeah, so they can still be college-bound on that with, with, with any diploma, but we do, we do closing, closeout surveys with seniors, and then we report that with the strategic plan, that, you know, to make, you know, the percentage of students who are going into either college, career, or military when they leave high school.
Got it, all right.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Poehl.
My pleasure.
Well, good news is that he asked some of my questions, so mine will be fewer. But to piggyback on some of those, so, so data, well, first, I know we're not looking at subgroups in this particular overarching goal, but I imagine in your root cause analysis that you're looking at subgroups of students who may be struggling more once they're on track to actually completing the advanced studies diploma. Do you have a sense who, who's struggling more than others? Or if there are particular gaps at certain schools that we need to?
I can't really speak to that without the data in front of me, but I can assure you that with, with Power School or Data Warehouse, that, that not only me, but all the way down to the teacher level, we have it at our fingertips. We can do great analysis reporting, and we can, you know, we are looking at that constantly to know where our students stand.
That may be, that may be helpful just from a, over, not school by school, but overall, just knowing how our subgroups of students are performing might be helpful in that case, because one of the reasons we chose this particular goal was not because there's, you know, is access to rigorous coursework, right? And I know in this part of the strategic plan, we have a table where we're looking at AP, IB, dual enrollment, you know, and, and some of that increasing access to those classes is part of, is obviously going to feed into this goal, right?
Correct.
And as Mr. Inge just asked, in terms of making sure we have equitable access to these courses, and that as a supplement to this, it might be helpful to also see, you know, the data around our increasing access to AP courses, IB, especially as we have, you know, one high school that has expanded, you know, the IB career pathways.
Right.
Which, you know, obviously gives more kids access to that rigorous coursework. So that might be also helpful to kind of?
So we'll, I, I, we'll see that when we do the review of the, you know, or actually it's sent in a report form, the strategic plan, we'll have that, and that one is broken down demographically as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, and then, and then I know Mr. Inge just asked about strategies you've put in place, and I appreciate your response, but for the strategies you have listed here in terms of next steps, what, I imagine that all of these together is what you hope will lead to, I guess, retaining students on track, that are?
Correct.
On track.
On track for the advanced studies, right.
Right, okay. And is there anything in particular of these next steps that you think have a bigger?
I, I think at this time of the, at this time of the year, at the end of first semester, end of the year, a lot of it has to do with the second one, where our teachers are flexible, and they, they give some grace on late work and missing assignments, and they, they reach out and they let them know, hey, if I still get this, you can still be successful, is one of our biggest avenues there, as well as the remediation efforts in, in the use of tutors.
Remind me, so I know we're moving into a four-by-four schedule next year, which I believe from previous conversations that we've had, may lend itself to improving outcomes in this particular, for this particular goal, right?
So that'll go back to one of Mr. Inge's questions, actually, nicely with four-by-four. So let's say we have a student who's finishing their junior year, and they only have one foreign language credit. Maybe they took Spanish one as a sophomore, then decided, I don't want to take it anymore. But now they're like, wait, I really want the advanced studies diploma. Next year, as a senior, they'd be able to take Spanish two and Spanish three. So they'd be able to qualify for that under the four-by-four schedule. So yes, that will help with, with advanced studies pathway planning.
I also have a question.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that you collect surveys on what students are interested. How often do you actually collect surveys?
The, the survey I was talking about was when seniors graduate, is there, like, what are their next steps, and where are they going from here? So have they been accepted to a college, or are they planning to go to maybe a community college? Are they going into the military? Do they have a career-oriented mind? So are they, you know, leaving and going into a workforce that they plan on doing for a long time? That's the survey that I was referring to.
So you don't collect a survey on what advanced courses they might want to take, or?
So each year, we collect the, the, when students go to register for their courses, what are their desires, what do they want to take? And if there's a broad enough amount of students who want it, then the course should be offered at the school.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Inge.
So all courses for advanced studies, they're offered at all of our high schools?
Correct.
Students don't have to travel to any other high schools to get any of the courses, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so I just wanted, I know Board Member Basine, she had asked about the data you didn't have in front of you. So I'm actually on the Department of Education's website now, I'm trying to get to it, but I recall I did look at it last night. So looking at our schools, two of our schools, Booker T. and Lake Taylor, they have a low proportion of students that are getting advanced studies diploma, while Granby High School and Mari are getting the highest proportion of advanced studies diplomas. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? I know it's a student choice, it's a parent's choice if their child wants to get it, but I just want to understand, because Booker T. is, I think it was like at nine, I could be wrong, but I recall it was a single-digit of advanced studies diploma. What are we doing to increase those numbers at those schools?
So again, it's the discussions with the students and with the academic career planning, and really now, the push at the middle school level. I, you know, again, I just want to say, when this, when we put the goal on the table for advanced studies diploma, we talked a lot about the fact, when a student entered high school, they're pretty locked in to where they were going, and, and so everybody was already in high school that we're tracking at this point. So right now, the emphasis in middle school on what we're really pushing with academic and career planning is where I, we're going to see the, you know, it's kind of like going back to the early literacy. When you guys remember, we first started talking about the early literacy planning that we did, where we really focused on K1, 2 really heavily, and now we're starting to see results in third, you know, vice, we saw good gains in third grade reading because it's, it just takes time. Same thing with the advanced studies diploma, when we focus on the middle school, you know, next year, as our rising ninth graders start coming in, then we'll start to see more, more students on track for advanced studies, because they, it's been discussed with them more thoroughly in the years where they're really deciding what they're going to do in high school. When most ninth graders are in high school, they really, they're, they're on track for where they're going to be on track for their diploma. Now, with the four-by-four, it's going to be easier to change some because they'd be able to double up on a course here and there. But I think with the time, you'll see that, because we put a lot of emphasis in the middle school in academic and career.
All middle schools.
Oh, absolutely, all middle schools, absolutely.
So do all middle schools offer the same introductory-level French, French, Spanish, whatever?
So they're, they're offered at all middle schools, and if, again, at the middle school level, if there's not enough students, then we're able to do that virtually as well.
Are you seeing a rise in the feeder schools to Booker T., Norview, Lake Taylor? Are you seeing a rise in those feeder middle schools of students taking introductory-level languages?
I don't have the data in front of me, Mr. Calagiro.
I'd be curious.
Yeah.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Poehl.
Thank you. See you in a few minutes.
Dr. Poehl.
We will move on to Agenda Item 2.02, Gifted Education Program Update with Carla Stead. Thank you, Ms. Stead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair DeCalagiro, Vice Chair Thomas, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, and Members of the Norfolk Public Schools School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on Norfolk Public Schools' gifted and academic career services as outlined in its local plan for the education of the gifted. I look forward to sharing a few highlights of our current services, as well as some plans for the next gifted local plan revision coming up 27 and 28. I want to first highlight the two big ideas that shape our current gifted services and are central to our gifted local plan, which outlines the district's approach to how it serves its students. First, we focus on equity and opportunity. Our goal is to support talent development for all students by expanding access to enrichment and advanced learning, not just for those that are formally identified gifted. Secondly, we believe in prioritizing services above labels. While formal identification does play a role, it shouldn't be the sole path to advanced learning. By applying multiple levels of service, we expand access to rigorous, high-level opportunities while ensuring students receive the best level of support. At the core, Norfolk Public Schools believes every student's strength should be recognized and supported so they can reach their true potential. So to support the first big idea of equity and opportunity, Norfolk Public Schools continues to grow its emerging scholars talent pool, an early talent development effort focused on students with schools from historically lower numbers of identified gifted students. These students score in the top 15% on Norfolk Public Schools' first-grade screener within their school, but the score did not meet the benchmark of formal gifted identification. From grades two through four, the emerging scholars are clustered in the general education classroom along with their gifted identified peers, and are pulled weekly by the gifted resource teacher for exposure to higher-level lessons and critical thinking that goes beyond just the general curriculum. It also provides opportunities to build confidence and readiness in these students for future advanced learning. All emerging scholars are automatically retested in the fourth grade, and this year, we retested our first cohort of emerging scholars, those who started in the second grade, to assess growth and identify those ready for formal identified, formal gifted services. In school year 24-25, 398 students in grades two through four receive gifted services through the emerging scholars model. This is in addition to our identified gifted students. Notably, the demographics of our emerging scholars more closely reflect the diversity of the district, helping us move more towards equitable access. This year, we retested our first cohort of emerging scholars originally selected in 2022. Of the 109 students retested, nearly 30% were newly identified as gifted after receiving services. By comparison, the full 2022 first-grade class of over 2,000 students, only 9.3% were identified gifted through that initial screening. The emerging scholars' identification rate exceeds Virginia's state average of 12.3% and surpasses, far surpasses, the national average of between 6% and 7%, showing the impact of early talent development and exposure to advanced learning. Another bright spot in our data is around student engagement and attendance. Both our emerging scholars and gifted identified students show lower rates of chronic absenteeism compared to the overall student population. This suggests that when we provide services that align with students' needs, whether that's through challenge, creativity, or connection, students are more likely to feel engaged, feel seen, feel heard, and therefore, more connected to their school. Support our second big idea, services above label. We're building a system where services are based on readiness, not just identification. Like the multi-tiered systems of support, our multiple levels of service framework aims to match support to student needs while expanding access to advanced learning. So this Level One encompasses all students and designed to spark curiosity and stretch thinking for all students in the district. Our Level Two is more targeted, small group instruction in the general education classroom. Our Level Three now is for specific students identified that would benefit from enriched learning opportunities such as our emerging scholars. And our Level Four is our firmly identified gifted students who receive instruction aligned to their abilities. Level One and Level Two are key in expanding access and developing talent from early on. Therefore, we appreciate the board's continued support in staffing full-time GRTs at all our elementary schools and maintaining shared GRT support across all their middle and high schools. An example of a Level One service is our Arts and Sciences enrichment program, as it encompasses and is available to all students regardless of identification. Delivered by school-based teachers, these courses spark curiosity, build creative thinking, and strengthen those important collaboration and communication skills. This year, approximately 70 Arts and Sciences courses were offered across 25 schools, expanding access- expanding access to enrichment across the district. While Level 1 services and enrichment is important, available to all students, we have systems ident-, to identify those who may benefit from more advanced services. Each fall, Norfolk Public Schools opens its gifted referral process to help identify students with exceptional ability or the potential. Referrals can come from teachers, from parents, or even from the students themselves. Over the past two years, referrals have grown by 30%, suggesting that our outreach and training, particularly among recognizing potential in underrepresented groups, is having an impact. In this school year, 730 students in grades 2 through 12 were referred, and about 36% were found eligible. We'll continue to equip teachers and families with tools to spot potential and address misconceptions that can limit opportunity. In addition to referrals, Norfolk Public Schools uses the cognitive abilities test, known as COGAT, as a universal screener for all its 1st-grade students. This research-based best practice helps us catch a wide brain, net, cast a wide net, and to ensure that we capture more students, especially those who might otherwise be overlooked, and give them a chance to be considered for gifted services. This chart shows the percentage of students whose scores met the 85th percentile threshold for gifted processing. The COGAT is also where we identify students for our emerging scholars talent pool. These are students who may not have met this 85% threshold you see in the chart, but scored in the top 15% within their school, and therefore create, uh, receive talent development services. And as part of our revised plan, we are now tracing, uh, we are now tracking English learners and students with disabilities more intentionally. This is an important step in helping us better understand who we are reaching and who we still need to support. Jumping now to our high school services, while Advanced Placement, IB, and Honest Courses are not really labeled gifted, they do offer the depth and rigor that meet the needs of our academically gifted students. These classes challenge learners, keep them engaged, and build skills for college and beyond. Secondary gifted services also include access to specialty programs at the middle and high school levels, offering advanced, interest-based curriculum options. As we complete Year 3 of implementing our current gifted local plan, we're already beginning to lay the groundwork for the next planned cycle, which takes effect in the '27-'28 school year. The revision process will begin with research and internal planning starting this summer, followed by stakeholder engagement through a variety of focus groups in early 2026. We will gather input from staff, students, family, our gifted education advisory committee, to ensure that the new plan reflects broad perspectives. A draft of this updated plan will be compiled and shared with the school board in June of 2026 before being submitted to the VDOE for its technical review in October. The board will have opportunities for involvement throughout this process, and we're committed to keeping our approach transparent, inclusive, and of course, data-informed. In closing, Norfolk Public School continues to expand access to gifted services emphasizing equity and inclusion. Recent data highlights positive outcomes, such as increased representation and identification through its emerging scholars program, and reduce absenteeism among students engaged in advanced learning opportunities. We appreciate the board's ongoing support, and at this time, welcome your feedback and questions. Thank you.
Are there questions?
Uh, Ms. Marabuffa.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
I don't know if I missed it, but the talent development process, what is that?
The tal-, the talent development processes are, it's called the Emerging Scholars Program, and so, we do, the, we do a universal screener in 1st grade for all our students, and there's a benchmark of 85% and one of their subscores to allow them to move to gifted processing. At some of our schools, a lot of those students don't meet that threshold, but we wanna provide them services. We're trying to be more equitable and giving more students opportunities. So, what we're doing is we're applying what's called local norms. So, even if the student's score did not meet that 85th percentile, if they are in the top 15% of the score in that school, they are considered emerging scholars, and the gifted resource teacher will pull them each week and develop them 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And then in the 4th grade, which we just did, we retest them to see, are they ready for gifted identification? But either way, ideally, we'll see them probably taking more advanced courses as they move progress, because we will keep, we will make sure that they're identified as an emerging scholar throughout their trajectory in Norfolk Public Schools.
Good.
Yeah, so that's what's, but, I mean, we believe in talent development regardless.
Right.
So, even if they're not an emerging scholar, if a teacher or a parent or, if, we will provide service regardless of a label. We are all about giving the student what they need. And so, if a student wasn't identified as an emerging scholar, but the gifted resource teacher goes in and spots something, or the parent asks, or the teacher says, we will pull them into those talent development, uh, that emerging scholars group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Stead, for your great presentation. So, uh, to pay back on that, around the emerging scholars in Slide Number 5, Ms. Tanner, if you can pull that particular slide up. So, I just wanna be sure I understand, cause I think it's pretty remarkable what you've shown here in terms of this nearly 30% emerging scholars that have been identified gifted, is that right?
That's correct.
That's what I meant, okay. So, these, these are, again, students that have met their local norms, right? And then, or, so, what's the difference between the 2022, there were 125 emerging scholars, but the percentage identified gifted, that's, that's the retest, right?
That's the retest.
In 2024?
Yes, correct.
Alright.
But those 32, and I'll let you finish your question, I apologize.
But they're not the same, so this 109 of that?
Of the 125.
Of the 125, okay.
Correct.
So, they're the same, okay. Yeah, that's, um, I think that's pretty remarkable.
It is.
And what that might suggest from a policy-practice standpoint for how we deliver gifted services, um, in the district, right? What are your, what are your thoughts about that, if this is a trend that we continue to, to see?
The talent development, absolutely. I think having, continuing the full-time gifted resource teacher to be able to go into those classrooms, regardless of the identification counts, again, it's-
Not the label, right?
It's not the label, it's the services. And just to hear the stories from either the students and the gifted resource teachers that are emerging scholars, I've heard, uh, one of my, uh, gifted resource teachers at JACO, said one of her students just feels smarter.
Yeah.
They come to school, they go, "I feel smarter."
Right, they're challenged.
They're challenged, they feel they're, you know, I go and I watch them, and I see what they're doing, and they're smart. They catch it, they just, they just need that exposure. So, if we can continue that, and ideally, you know, continue it, and maybe even focus it on, as we continue, we talked about middle school, that's a lot of times where our kids go underground, and if, ideally, if we can, you know, making sure that we have more supports in our middle school with our gifted services, I would like to see that, and that might help with the past advanced and help with the other issues as well.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking, like, does it, does it beg the question, should we be doing more of a school-wide effort where we are, um, providing that higher-level, challenging, rigorous coursework for every student? So, there's some, you know, research out there that's suggesting, you know, that that is, that may be the way gifted is going, right? So, I just wonder with this data, if that is something that-
A perfect example would be the school-wide enrichment model, that's by Razuli up in University Connect-, uh, yeah, Connecticut. It's been proven to show substantial results.
Right, yeah.
And it's the whole school-wide, it's, it's, it's almost like a specialty program for the school, and every student is involved, and every student goes through a certain, it's curriculum, and it's based on the, the curriculum, but it has, I don't wanna say tainted, but it's infused with some type of either interest, um, or theme with a gifted, you know, with that kind of gifted pedagogy. And again, gifted is good for all students, I mean, all students benefit.
That's, I guess, what my point is.
It's just, yeah, it's for, it's essential, and I keep saying that over and over again, it's not just for that certain-
Right, yeah.
Some students need a little bit more, uh, of advanced services, and some teachers just need more exposure and opportunity. And so, the word gifted can be very polarizing, and people have misconceptions about it. So, part of our mission is really just communicating and educating what gifted is and is not. Some districts have gone away from the word gifted.
Yeah, exactly.
Exact advanced academics, I, I know Oregon has, has gone away with it, and we could, um, of course, then there's some parents that really want the word gifted, and so, there's that mindset, right? So, um-
Right, they, yeah.
But to me, it's just providing what the students, all students, the opportunity to be exposed and to grow and to be challenged and to find what they love and to have them want to come to school.
Without the label.
Without, with, yeah, without, and even the kids with the label, the gifted label, they feel intimidated, I don't like the label, so, which is, so-
Yeah, well, I appreciate that feedback, cause, um, that's something I'm gonna be looking at as we, as you continue to bring us these updates, and we move into talking about our next, you know, the revisions to the local plan. I have-
I have a question, you mind if I-
Related to that, mine?
Uh, a little bit, you go ahead and finish, and then I'll speak.
Okay, so, um, Slide 9 and 10, if we could go, so, I am really curious to learn more about, um, the intentionality that you talked about in terms of, um, you know, our special education population, our 504 EL population, what the barriers were before, and what you did differently, uh, with the department, what gears is done differently to now capture that group, and what-
We're being more deliberate with it, I mean, it's always twice-exceptional has always been part of gifted, but we're being, uh, more deliberate, we're actually have it, we have information for tracking, I don't, I don't like the word "tracking", but we're keeping track of it.
Monitoring.
Mind, mindful of it, and we're trying to keep it on our reports, and I know, um, we have, so, we'll be going on, on the, forward with that. One of the things that the Norfolk Public do, Norfolk, Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools has provided is, uh, a budget to partner with the College of William &amp; Mary, and, uh, Dr. Carpenter is an expert on twice-exceptionality, and so, she has come and given PD to our gifted resource teachers, and she actually came to GIAC, um, and presented to GIAC. So, she, so we have, and we've done that a couple of years now, and so, then, we've had schools reach out, we've partnered with special ed, um, trying to get some PD out there. As for our Ls, um, I'm, I'm in the same building with the L Senior Director, we've already talked about doing some, they've got that nice, uh, you know, facility there, we're gonna do some workshops on trying to develop the L population. A lot of its misconceptions, again, people have an idea of what gifted is or is not, and it is an ongoing, um, mission to try to relate to them, you know, what gifted services could be, and part of it is exposure and, and making it, try to make us, we're very, try to be as inclusive as possible. We had a recently, we had a, you know, some, uh, out, an outreach program, we called it Gifted Palooza, we invited everybody there, regardless of if they're identified or not, and we just had them play games at different tables and, and experience, and we had a good turnout, and so, people started interesting, and, and so, just building awareness, um, making, we've had workshops to parents about twice-exceptionality, we've had workshops with the Ls, and so, just doing more of that. We're just being more deliberate, and it's, I'm, I'm being very wordy about it, but yeah. You're welcome.
So, uh, first of all, the data's great, and I think what you're doing is fantastic. So, this question is not meant to be a negative question, but I am, I do, I do have a question, because anecdotally, I have heard that there are some schools in the district that identify more kids as gifted than other schools, and that could be for a myriad of reasons, but do we see that trend in our district where there are some schools that, uh, find that there are higher rates of students that test into gifted initially?
Absolutely, that's why we have our talent development.
Right, so that, but my question really is, for the talent development, you're looking at the kids who score the top 15% at that local school, so is conceivable that a child that is identified, if a child is at a school with a high gifted population, they might not be identified because they're not in the top 15% of their school? Whereas, whereas at another school, they might be identified as an emerging scholar?
Correct, I, I think I know what you're saying, so some schools will have no emerging scholars, because the top 15% were all identified gifted.
Right.
Some schools have no identified gifted, or maybe one or two, but we're still serving 15% of that 1st-grade population as a talent development.
Right.
So, it's just, we're trying to make sure we're giving equitable services, regardless of the label, that the talent development or-
But my concern is that somebody who might be 16% at the school with everyone identified gifted would get, would get emerging scholars' services at a school with a very low gifted population, but don't get that, don't get that services at the school that is their home school, because there is such a large identified gifted population.
And again, if that parent wants, feels that the child is not being challenged, if the teacher recommends the student to be given services, if the gifted resource teacher comes in and pushes in and says, "That student needs to come to my pull-out", we will certainly provide services, regardless if they're, uh, you know, an emerging scholar or gifted identification, we're here to provide. If they are in class and meeting the objectives and bored, that's what we're here for. We will pull them regardless of their, of the label. Again, we're trying to emphasize it's about services, not the labels. We have the labels just to, to make sure that we are meeting certain percentages, and, and we have to turn into the state, you know, every, every year, you know, the percentage of our student that we're identifying gifted. But to us, our goal is to provide services to as many students who need it as possible. And some of our identified gifted students, really, sometimes we don't pull them because they need more remediation, and some of those kids in the class, the general ed that were never identified gifted or emerging scholars, we will pull them because they're sitting in class bored, they're acting up, so, that's our job, is to identify, regardless of whether they, they get through the emerging scholars or their gifted identification process. And I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, it, it does, but how do we empower our parents to know this? And how do we empower our teachers, like, to make these referrals?
That's the gifted resource teachers that go in there, they build those relationships, we have workshops for the parents, we, we send out, we, the, all the gifted resource teachers are supposed to communicate to parents on a, on a bi-week, a bi-monthly basis, and then they should be included in the school's newsletters, and they should be part of the school's internal PD plan as well. So, a lot of them are able to present the COGAT screening, the referral process, they're supposed to be able to provide, you know, training, here's what to look for, here's what to spot potential, here are some misconceptions, the student that's acting up, that you think no way is gifted, is probably extremely gifted, bored, and frustrated. And then, so that's the job, that's what we do, that's what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be going into the class, we're supposed to be providing that professional development to our teachers and our administrators, um, as well, just as important. Welcome.
Mr. En?
Here. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Just wanna commend you and all of our phenomenal teachers, this is Teacher Appreciation Week.
That's absolutely.
And shout-out to all our teachers doing an awesome job in Norfolk Public Schools. How many students in Norfolk Public Schools have been identified as gifted?
From 8 grades, K-12, I wanna say about, this, I don't have the exact number in front of me, um-
Or a percentage?
Do you have a percentage?
Right now, we're about 17%.
17%?
Which is above, about twice the national average and above the state of Virginia.
Okay. Excellent work, excellent.
There are no more questions, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
For the presentation. Next, we have Agenda Item 2.03, School Board Policy Review, Dr. Pol.
Alright, thank you. Good afternoon again, everybody, Chair Decalgero, Vice Chair Thomas, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. So, uh, policy review, um, today is, is, is pretty, pretty small, and we still are waiting on the VSBA policy updates. They have not been released yet for the, the last session. So, there are two policies today that I'm just gonna briefly highlight. Policy BDDC is Agenda Preparation Dissemination, and that has one update in it, as you saw on the red line, changing the word inclusion to consideration. And then, Policy GABZA, I- And then Policy GABZAIIBEAZ, that's a long one, that's around Bring Your Own Device. There have been updates there to match the No Cell Phone, the Executive Order 33, and basically what that means is if a student brings their own device, they can use it before or after school, and it keeps the, the regulation in place to say, you know, if you're on our internet, on our wifi, you can't do this, you can't do that, but it says in there specifically that BYOD is not allowed during the school day, so that it supports EO 33. So those are the, the two specific policies that, that we'll, we can have questions and conversations about that will require a vote at the business meeting. And then there are two regulations that are just updates for the board. The first one is the, the Board Staff Communications Policy Regulation, BGR, and I believe that was a part of the work the board had been doing, and that updates the, the, the regulation, rather, to match the current practice. And then JEDR is on student absences, and that's updating in preparation for the four-by-four schedule. So those are the, the four on the docket, then the two that will require a vote. So I'll, I'll pause there for any questions or comments or discussion on the policies.
Chair, Colonel Paulson.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. I'm concerned about the wording on the process for agenda, let's call that, Agenda Preparation Dissemination, where we change, unfortunately, is only one word, and it changes the context of how we conduct our business. Our business is here as a body, is free exchange of ideas and information, and listening to what the other members have to say. You're changing it now from it will be included to it will be considered, but considered by who? And how is it, how do, how do they come to the judgment of whether your idea will meet the floor? Again, back to the basic process, and every member has the opportunity to speak, speak freely, and present his ideas. They don't have to be accepted, but the way this is worded, it will not make it that far. I yield the floor.
Well, to what Ms. Colonel Paulson has said, like, on the agenda today is future agenda items, and I guess we're going, you know, around the table, so with the inclusion striked out and put in consideration, like you said, it can be considered, what determines consideration versus?
Automatic inclusion.
Right, automatic inclusion. Is that, you know, the chair saying, no, we're not putting that on the agenda, or is that a, a majority vote?
Vice Chair Superintendent?
Yeah, I mean, how, who makes, with this written, if we approve this, who, who's going to make the final decision?
Well, with the future agenda items, I asked for, I've been asking for consensus from the board.
Board, okay.
But different chairs absolutely can interpret that.
Right.
Differently.
Yeah, yeah.
But the flip side, I would argue, is that the chair was elected to do their job, and part of that is working with the superintendent to set the agendas. So we, a single school board member shouldn't have the power to drive the agenda either. So it is, it is a slippery slope.
Yes.
Here. And I, I yield, I yield my time to anybody else who would like to speak.
Colonel?
Yes, I, I understand your points. I'll give you an example. I mentioned at a meeting about the, the board culture, and the response to me was noted. I brought it up again about the declining board culture, and nothing has happened. It's still declining, and we need to talk about it, but it's nowhere on the horizon, and it has been not acknowledged that we're going to do that. Yield the floor.
Ms. Pacey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and I appreciate, you know, we talked about this with our norms and protocols discussion that we had in March, I believe, about, you know, how we would come to consensus on agenda items, and you've been doing that, I think, at our board meetings since then, in getting that consensus, and I do, like, with that particular example, I do recall that a majority of the board was not in support or did not agree, right? I think that was a reason for why it was not included on the agenda, or has maybe not been considered.
Right.
And so, and then we talked about having norms and protocols, for instance, on the agenda, and there was a consensus around that. But again, I know you're taking it back and considering it with Dr. Birdsong and team about when to bring it back to our work session. So I don't know, you know, that's where norms and protocols kind of elaborates on what the policy says when we talk about what consideration actually means, because that kind of spells out what it is, but you're right, you know, different chairs could interpret consideration differently.
But again, I don't think a single board member should have.
No, absolutely, and that, that's why, that's why I think most, we supported the, the practice of getting consensus from the board about whether everyone felt that that was an agenda item, because sometimes, you know, we all have opinions about, you know, about certain things, or want to know, you know, what data about certain things, but not everybody may not feel that that is a critical piece of board business, you know, I personally am in support of, as written, as it, as you have changed it, changed that word, but, you know, I'm open to hearing from my colleagues.
I'd say I, I agree with what Tanya's saying about having a larger process about us discussing potential agenda topics and having a consensus on that before it makes it to your guys' meeting. I think the word consideration is a more accurate term of what's actually happening, and if it's not considered for, in my experience in agenda planning, if it wasn't, if it couldn't make its way on the next agenda, you're planning like three months out, so it'll go, you know, you want to get it on as immediately as possible, because then it could become, you know, an irrelevant issue or some, you know, whatever. So, so that's just my, my opinion.
Let's go around. Do you have any com, further comments? Your Inge?
Yeah.
Do you have any further comments, Colonel?
Yes, I find, again, this will exclude those that are not in the majority, and we do have a majority of consensus, but if you, you can't hear what the other board members have to say, then we're not aboard. I yield the floor.
Any, any comments or questions about any of the other proposed policy changes?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you expand upon the bringing your own devices policy, please?
So it's a regulation that we've had for a while on the books where students can bring their own devices, so whether it was a phone, a tablet, or a computer in the past, and it's, it lists everything around when you log into the network, and what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and, and how that was put into place.
So they will be only able to use it before and after school, correct?
So, based on Executive Order 33, when we put the cellphone policy into place, that's correct.
Okay, so the purpose is just to provide wifi after school?
Well, it, there's, correct, so the, the purpose of maintaining, because the discussion that we had was why even have a BYOD regulation then? The purpose is because if a student does bring their own device and they're using it after school hours, and they're on our, our wifi and connectivity, we want to make sure that there's a regulation in place to say what, what is acceptable and what's not.
Is this the same wifi that is accessible to students during the day on school laptops?
There's a guest network, that's correct.
Okay. Are you familiar with how they filter the system? Because I know you mentioned, it's mentioned on the document.
No, that, that would be our, our IT department. I'm not familiar with how it's filtered.
Dr. Murray?
So, yeah, I read the, the polit, the policy. My concern is the development of the enforcement when it comes to especially the cellphones, and I know some schools are, have little notices they hand them, but you never, like, the person who's giving that violation never really knows how, if that's their first, second, or third warning.
Sorry, are we, are we referring to the cellphone policy now?
Yeah, or any device, I mean, if, if they have their.
Yeah, which is the cellphone policy is the cellphone and devices, so I, I, I would have to look into that to see, you know, the process that was put into place was, was, you know, that when it was done, it was documented in a central location in the school, so that even, even if, when the, when the teacher might give it out, they may not know immediately when they give it, but they'll find out pretty soon once it's recorded in the central location.
What is that central location?
It's synergy or CIS.
So.
Our student information system.
Yeah, so, in practical, you know, practical scenario would be a student has the device out, it's in between classes, they're not supposed to have it, they get a warning, the teacher then goes and enters that in synergy. Is that what you're saying?
Do they have to report it to the office, and the office enters it in synergy? It's a teacher, a teacher.
The teacher reports it to the office?
Yeah, because a teacher can't enter discipline into synergy, so the, there, there are certain people in the main office who can enter the discipline into synergy, and then once it's entered into synergy, then they'll know. So there is, there, there might be.
They don't really know.
Immediately they don't.
Which violation, like, how many times they've been warned about this, because there's what, four, maybe four warnings, three or four warnings?
Right, immediately they don't know, but then if it, if it comes up as if they've hit their, their mark on it, then they're, they'd be called to the office for it, because the teachers aren't responsible for doing the discipline or anything else either, it would, it would be on the, on the, on the administration to do that.
I just, I think we need to think that through some more, because it's putting a lot on the administration, or the teachers in the school and the administration, and, you know, if you're going from class to class yourself, to have time to go back and have to do that, it just seems like we need to streamline that process more.
We can, I'll work with Dr. Gattala, and we can certainly look into that.
I mean, even if the kids had, I mean, I, I guess some schools don't have the identification cards, like, if there was like a swipe system or something that they immediately have it recorded without all the back and forth.
I, I totally agree, I, that there, there's probably a better system out there, but it, you know, without having access to like a swipe card or something that would be immediate where a teacher could put something in, and it, you know, we don't, we don't have that infrastructure in place right now to be able to do it. So right now, the, the infrastructure we have is it's reported, and once it's reported, it's put into synergy right away, and then it would pop up and note, and then the one who would be doing the discipline anyway, which would be the administrator, would be the one to call them down. Because remember, when we put this in play also, we didn't want teachers to feel like they were a disciplinarian in this effect, that they, they needed to report it, because we didn't want to put that onus on them.
Yeah, so I'm afraid that they might feel like they are being put in that disciplinary position and might not want to have time to deal with it, you know, it's just, because...
Could email the assistant principal or the main office and just say, "A warning has been given to the student." They will put it into synergy, and they'll say, "Oh, that's the third warning." So this is what they get, and then so the administrator will apply the discipline, not the teacher. They're just alerting.
And they're still giving the kid the warning, though, I feel like that's part of the process, but, but anyways, I, I just would like to see a more streamlined process to take that off of the teachers a little more.
Definitely don't want it on the teachers, very true.
About just discipline in, in general, you, you may want to think about it this way, it's the teacher, if, if you're acting out in class, and I'm your classroom teacher, I'm going to be able to best describe what you've done in class, as opposed to an assistant principal who might be dealing with 10 other children. And so we have to have teachers' input, because their input will determine if the child is going to be disciplined or not, so they have to have some involvement with the process, otherwise, who's going to know what really happened?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the four-step process, like, you get a warning, you get a warning, you get a, you know, at some point, you get it taken away, and then the, you know, all that, it just.
There's still a lot of onus on the teachers, but this doesn't really follow, follow under this policy discussion, so we wanted to.
It would be a regulation attached to this policy, potentially.
Is there a regulation attached to this policy?
Not yet.
It's, it's a separate policy. The cellphone policy is a separate policy.
It's a separate, yeah, and it has its own, yeah.
And it is the disciplinarian who will administer the discipline, like the assistant principal. Once they receive the referral, then they'll know, "Oh, I'm looking at Adele Martin, this is her sixth time, like, oh my goodness."
I wouldn't agree with that.
When a parent comes to the school and picks up her child's cellphone. But yes, so the teacher has to be involved, because otherwise, he's going to report it.
Who's going to report it?
Another child in the class? I mean, the child himself or herself? Somebody's got to report it. But I hear you, we, we want to take things away from our teachers, but they, but they have to report it, and they, they want to report it, so it's accurate. And there's some follow-up, you know, consequences.
All right, additionally, when we were developing this, we did take this to teacher forum, and we had discussions in there to make it as teacher-friendly as possible.
Definitely don't want to burden them, but they want to be a part of this process as it relates to discipline and reporting.
Thank you. Please don't go anywhere. We will now move on to Agenda Item 2.04, Program Planning for Summer School.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't ask, was anybody have any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were done. Mr. Inge, I apologize.
It's okay, no problem. So if we can call to BGR, Regulation on Board Staff Communication, so we're looking to take the current one where we have all the superintendent's chiefs, I'm assuming this is all your chiefs, Dr. Birdsong?
Specifically, let me get to that.
Okay.
So I can, but typically, yes, as it relates to that policy, it would be around the chiefs, but more so my designee.
Okay.
My designee, if I'm on leave.
Right.
I'll have a designee.
Okay, so what, so just correct me, so I'll make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah.
So as we have it currently right now, this is saying that if you are away, then one of the one through six, chief of staff, all the way to clerk of school board, could be one of your designees if we need to request data or information.
So I think that's the former, that's the former policy.
If you scroll down, you'll see the red line.
That's not the revised policy.
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, oh, you're, okay, sorry.
So, and then the red line, we want to strike out all of the chiefs and the clerk, and we want to put in the event of a division-wide emergency. Okay, that shouldn't be a separate communication by itself? Because, okay, let, let me just give an example, so if, just to say you take a vacation, we still have a school board meeting, who's your second person in command?
Okay, repeat that.
So if you take a vacation, who's your second person in command for us to get information from? I don't want to mess up your vacation and ask you for student data.
And I appreciate that I get a vacation, so thank you for putting that out there, because I haven't had one, so thank you, Mr. Inge. So I have a designee, and it's not always the same person.
Okay.
Okay, when I have to be on professional leave, like I was when you all had the special call meeting, then that designee would be the person, more likely than not, it would be the chair that would be in contact with that person to say, "We have a division-wide crisis, we need your support with, with whatever the situation might be." So that would be the person that typically would be the chair that would call, but if you felt the need that, you know, you needed to call as opposed to the chair, then that would be the person that would be serving as my designee while I'm out of the office for.
Got it, so, and this is if, if it's an emergency?
That's right.
So, okay, so with this communication, as I'm reading it, this is just communication across the board. I'm just thinking, shouldn't it be one standard, one for your communication if you're leave, like I said, vacation, and then if there's an, and if there's an emergency? So that's two, I would think.
My designee, even if it's an emergency, that, the designee would be my person who would be serving in my stead while I'm out on leave.
And you would select that designee?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it wouldn't be one of the chiefs? So it could be Mr. Fraley, for example, if, if you wanted it to be him?
Yes, it could, it could possibly. It, yes, it could, it could possibly be.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I think, Mr. Eng, I don't think started. As part of the annual meeting of the school board, the superintendents by statute tell the board they recommend superintendent's designees for when they're absent.
Gotcha, okay.
And so, there are a number of people that have been voted on, you know, that were presented to the board and approved by the board as the official designee of the superintendent and superintendent's absence. I forget the names. I think there've been several now.
Could be, yes.
Okay, all right, awesome. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right, any more questions? I am, I apologize for that. Any more questions about school board policies? Yes?
All right, may I add one more thing? In regards to the filtering system, I think it's important that we do our research on what is being filtered cause I find that often things that are educational, educational are still being filtered and students are not able to gain access to important historical concepts that might be considered against or private. For example, searching apartheid, sometimes you face difficulties finding correct information regarding it. And I think it's very important that as we're about to put this policy forward, looking into that so that information is available to all students that is accurate and usable.
Thank you for that, Board Chair.
Yeah, I believe there's a, there's a method in place that if a student is researching and they come to something that has been blocked, they can go through their teacher who can then go to their, yeah, here's our expert on that.
Yes, yeah, if there's something that a student is trying to get access to, or even a teacher, sometimes before, as they're preparing their lessons, they're gonna first check to see what's available, what they can get into, what they can't, what the students can get into. Uh, there's a process. So, if a teacher cannot get into it or a student cannot get into it, they let the administration know and we can change the filters. The filtering system changes all the time as new things are added to the internet, new pages, and things are taken off. So, it's a constantly kind of a living document. There's multiple things that get changed with what's filtered and what's not. So, it's important that we allow students to be able to access that information as well as teachers.
Right, but that, that's not gonna, that's gonna be a process.
The process is for the teacher, for the student to let the teacher know and the teacher to let the administration.
Right, but that doesn't help the student the day when they're trying to do the work. It's, it's gonna-
Oh, they can, they can change this filter in, within less than a day. I mean, it, all it takes is for someone at this, at the school level to know and then they can just really access that one site and whitelist it and that allows the site to be accessed by anybody.
And the good news is that our teachers are designing their lessons in advance. So, if there is something they need access to, they should be able to ask for that.
It always goes through first as they're preparing lessons and make sure everything is able to be accessed by students.
Yeah, I think, I think it's probably more on the student part that it can be very frustrating when you're given an assignment to go and research something and half the websites are blocked. I mean, I'll give you a funny story. When I worked for NPS when Google first came out, like, really just came out, and google.com was filtered. But I found google.de, which was still an English-language Google, that I told everybody in the building to use because that way we could still Google.
All right.
So, um, maybe I shouldn't have done that. But anyway, um, I think, I think the problem is that the students, the students in that moment, like, just feel hamstrung. They just, they, they can't get their research done and, or they're finding inaccurate research because maybe there's something on the site that is a little bit controversial and has, has been, and been stopped.
Very true. We, we definitely don't want to let information that should not be accessed by students to get through. So, sometimes we end up being a little more restricted in the beginning and that's really just safety. Uh, and there's rules and regulations that we have to follow by the federal government that says you must restrict certain things. So, we try to work with that. It's, it is very challenging in that part. And as I had said before, the internet, I mean, is, pages are growing. Thousands of pages every second are, are added to the internet. So, it's getting vast and huge. And so, it is quite a process to do that, to be able to filter what's important to be filtered.
Uh, Ms. Pessinehadder?
Well, I was gonna say, so you said that that can happen at the school level where they can-
Generally, the school can whitelist it and it will be whitelisted for the division.
So, there's an administrator or the school's IT or-
We have an IT person that would contact Mr. Zamora and then they would quickly whitelist that and then would be able to be accessed immediately, really.
So, it's not something a teacher, you know, if they assign, you know?
They, it's not something they, they have the access to be able to do, but they can put a list of websites. These are all things my students will be accessing next week for our lesson. And then, what they'll do is they will have that teacher send that information. Once they send that information to IT, they can whitelist all of them very quickly. And then, the whole division is then whitelisted.
We're phoning several friends. We have a new friend, Mr. Zamora. He's our technical, on-the-ground person.
Okay.
All right, good afternoon. Jesse Zamora, seeing Director of IT. So, North Public Schools, we take cybersecurity very serious and that's from internal and external. So, one of the things we wanna make sure is, filtering is extremely important. Sometimes, students or staff would browse and they don't know what's actually on the site. Our filtering system is called Lightspeed. My, my, my blood pressure.
You said it's called Lightspeed?
Lightspeed.
Oh, you said something about your blood pressure? You all right?
Hey, yeah.
So, you can break it.
He does get very passionate about it.
So, so basically, we do have a system in place and it's called the Help Desk. Any teacher that needs access to a website that they need access to, you can email the Help Desk. Or you can call 757-628-3900. Okay, and we do have, and we do have a state-of-the-art system. As a matter of fact, when we were audited, we were one of the top secured networks of the state. So, I just want you guys to know. We have a very supportive team and sometimes it seems like there are issues, but trust me, that's just normal operations. So, we do our very best on the daily to make sure everyone has access to a device as well as re, uh, access to network resources. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Chair, but you gotta recognize me first.
Mr. Eng.
All right.
I had already recognized you.
I'm gonna make sure I like to follow my things. I don't want Colonel Paulson to get me. All right, um, so my question, if I'm a student at Booker T. Washington High School and I want to look up apartheid in South Africa and so, the teacher doesn't have access or autonomy based off of none of their credentials and their licenses, like, we don't give the teachers any autonomy to say, hey, we know that they can go look at it first, it is reliable information and then we can disseminate that to the student? We have to call a Help Desk? The Help Desk has to look at it, make sure it's on the good list? And then, and then it's, how, what's the turn, what's the turnaround time?
So, for, like, like, like Dr. Birdsong said, if a teacher is to present something ahead of time, let us know ahead of time. But otherwise, each school has a dedicated engineer.
Okay.
And the engineers, they don't necessarily have the rights because everything's managed centrally here at CAP. They just, all they do is escalate it to tier three and then we just go and make some adjustments and-
So, it's a same-day turnaround, instantaneously? Would you, would you say that?
Yes, yes. And a lot of times, a lot of times, the schools will create a list and then that list, ahead of time, will make sure it's unblocked.
Gotcha.
But the Lightspeed, what it does is, we don't say, we don't go like when you say, do research. We don't go to every single page and-
You're looking for certain things.
Lightspeed categorizes it.
Got it, okay.
And then, when it's categorized, if it finds something that's potentially malicious, it will automatically block it.
Is that also searching anything to make sure, we're in a, we're in the era of misinformation? So, does that filter anything to, do we have something that to make sure we're not giving misinformation to our students?
That's something that I can find out.
Can we look for keywords, pictures and things like that?
Yes, but we do have the ability, like, say, for instance, the arts department. So, in the arts department, the teachers have to be the ones to declare whether, like you say, they have a, a statue that's, you know, has a, a-
I got you.
Right? So, we give them the ability, we put them apart as a, a group to be able to say, verify and validate it so that we can unblock that particular site.
Okay, and so, and then if, okay, so they verify it, you don't unblock it automatically. You, you look at it as well. There's another safeguard in place?
No, they can actually do that. But what happens is, let's say they do verify and it was a malicious site, we will be alerted.
Right, okay.
And then, we can actually then, then search and see what happened.
Got it, and then the teacher could be, would be potentially held accountable for? Okay, okay. So, if we give the teacher permission to look at artwork that may have a body part on it, then why are we not giving teachers the same access to look at the information prior to giving it to a student if a student's looking on their laptop? Cause since we're a one-for-one school, you know, what if they actually did that?
I, I guess the problem is, if a teacher is doing their lesson planning at school, they can't look at the website because it's blocked for them to figure out if it's an appropriate website.
Maybe let me rephrase the question. So, what I'm saying is, if a teacher in an art class goes and looks at a statue of, let's say, Dionyses, um, and it has nudity on it and thus, the teacher can approve or not approve it then, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and if they pr, do approve it, and let's just say, a parent gets word that they approved it and the parent did not like that their child also saw that and then they do a complaint, thus it goes through the system and the processes and thus, then the teacher could be called in and held accountable for, for actually showing that, correct?
And that's one of the reasons why we kinda wanted to keep it tailored to the arts.
Okay.
Because, because if we were to have all teachers try to validate what's, what's good, a good website and a bad website, it's gonna be hard to manage from a centralized perspective.
Well, I, I guess I'm just looking at it just from an efficiency standpoint and also giving teachers some autonomy and independence in the classroom that if a student, if I'm on my laptop and I wanna look up something, ding, it doesn't, the teacher can't put in a password and say, hey, I verified and I've looked at it, that it's good and then we can keep going with our lesson plan.
Teacher can't even look at the website because it's filtered.
Right, so the student looks at it and it says it can't go through. Teacher's gotta go through a whole process, but an art teacher doesn't have to go through the same process. They can click something and then they can just show it.
I don't think so. I think they still have to go through the same-
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes, sorry.
We're, we're, this is supposed to be devote on the policy?
Right, you are absolutely right. Thank you for bringing us back to, 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 back to center.
You're welcome.
But thank you, yes. It's good information.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? It's not our intention to block sites to prohibit any students from learning. What we're trying to do is to be able to keep supporting teaching and student learning, but be able to practice good, make sure we secure our networks and our data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cause we've been attacked before, so.
I can imagine.
And the, and this policy does not address what your concerns are.
Got it, okay.
The policy on the floor that we're discussing does not address those concerns.
Thank you for that.
But that could be something we talk about at a future meeting. Okay, uh, we are not taking a vote today.
Yeah, it'll be on the business meeting.
It'll be on the business meeting agenda. Well, thank you. And please don't go anywhere again, Dr. Poehl. Uh, we're going to move on to 2.04, program planning for summer school 2026.
Five.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2025. I'm just looking at the agenda.
No, no problem. So, good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Mr. Calagero, Vice President Thomas, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong. I'm here to give you a brief overview of the summer programs being offered this summer. So, this summer, the Summer Stars program, where successful thinkers are ready students. There's our stars. There will be several opportunities for content-specific learning as well as enrichment programming to meet the needs of all of our students. In an effort to continue offering as many programs as possible at no cost to students and parents, there will be elementary programming in 13 of our sites. The sites with multiple schools hosted at the school in bold font. So, students who are zoned for, from Sewell's Point, Crossroads K5 and Camp Allen will attend Summer Stars programming at Granby Elementary School. And for, for those that are newer to the board, this is a, uh, we really started this process right after COVID to try to get all of our students back and saw great results. So, again, with budgeting and funding, we're able to, to provide this free for all of our, our students. Programming for the pre-K to five grades include the Early Childhood Special Education Program, a four-year-old summer literacy camp for any of our pre-K4 students preparing to transition to kindergarten. And I'd like to say that we're, we're the only division in our region and possibly the state that offers a, a pre-K summer program to, to really help our, our pre-K4 be solidly ready for kindergarten. Summer Stars Basic Skills Programming, a Behavior and Social Skills Support Program as well as a cross-categorical program for our students with disabilities within the extended school year eligibility, which is IEP-driven. We also have Camp Einstein, uh, getting ready for pre-algebra six for rising sixth-grade students. Summer Arts Academy, the Green STEM Experience and our English Learner Newcomer Program will all continue to be offered this summer. Again, I'm gonna fit this word in here as much as possible at no cost to our students. Our middle school students will be attending classes within the, the sites listed on this slide with all of our Star program this year being in one middle school to help consolidate and help with, with costs so that we can have transportation to one middle school. NPS middle school students will have Summer Stars programming, cross-categorical programming, getting ready for pre-algebra and algebra, Junior University, Health and PE, Summer Arts, Green STEM Summer Experience and the Middle School English Learner Newcomer Program as well. And as has been successful over the past two summers, our in-person high school, summer school program will be the hybrid program with students attending in-person two days a week and live online the other two days a week. So, Lake Taylor High School will host our summer programs with Lake Taylor, Granby and Maury attending in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays. They'll be online Wednesdays and Thursdays. Norview and Booker T. will attend in-person on Wednesdays and Thursdays and they'll be online Monday and Tuesdays.
And will they get synchronous or asynchronous?
It's all synchronous.
It's all synchronous?
It's synchronous online, correct. High school students will have the Summer Stars program, which will house students who are unsuccessful in a course during their regular school year. And any student who wishes to take a course for initial credit will do so through Virtual Virginia's online program, which again, is at no cost to our students. There will be a virtual credit recovery options for students with teacher assistance provided daily and two programs for students with disabilities who qualify for extended school year focused on postgraduate career development or cross-categorical programs. There will also be advanced placement summer academies to prepare students for upcoming AP classes. So, we offer that for about two weeks through the summer. A credential bootcamp for students who are eligible to take a credential exam and I think Ms. Goshen talked about that when she brought the Perkins Grant forward. Work-based learning opportunities, a summer ISAP program for students seeking their GED as well as courses at open campus for students to continue to catch up on their learning. And as with last year, NPS is partnering with United Way to offer extended learning for Chesterfield, PB Young, Rufford and Southside STEM Academy through the LEAP program. And for students at Coleman Place, Ingleside, Lindenwood and Suburban Park, the 21st Century Learning Grants will provide additional learning activities. And this slide shows our enrollment trends for the past seven years. As with last summer, all of the programs are free to NPS students and applications for a variety of programs, they closed on the 28th. So, we're just, just wrapped that process up. And you can see, um, post-COVID where our numbers have increased dramatically. So, pre-COVID, um, we weren't really doing much with secondary summer school and we opened that back up. And now, we also offer for free our arch programming in Camp Einstein that have increased our enrollment so that our students at all levels can learn. A couple of data points, uh, summer 2024, um, for reading specifically, 50.7% of the students enrolled in summer school showed improvement from their spring-to-fall scores. And for mathematics, the, it was 35.1% that showed improvement from the, from the spring-to-fall. So, that's the brief overview of what's gonna come this summer. I'm prepared for any questions or comments you may have.
Question?
Thank you, Dr. Poehl. So, has there, has there been any changes to the eligibility criteria for our students with disabilities who can participate in extended year?
No, it's, it's IEP-driven.
IEP-driven, okay.
That has always been IEP-driven. It's an IEP team decision on eligibility for extended school year.
Okay, okay. I was just curious if anything had changed around that? And, um, it's kind of piggy, based on our conversation earlier around Goal Five, what specifically, are there any programs in place during the summer that might help like, bridge, um, some of, you know, some of, for the kids that are off track, you know, to kinda help them?
Yeah, so really, in general, all of the programs. So, our, our Stars program is more of a remediation program. So, if a student was unsuccessful in a course, they can go to the summer program and they can make that course up. So, in summer, if you've, if you've, if you've taken a course and you were unsuccessful, the, the general allotment of time is 140 hours.[1777.48] of time is a hundred and forty hours, and to retake the course, it narrows it down to seventy hours, so that's why summer is a better time to do it because you can take it in less time. And then with students who maybe made the decision, I want to get that advanced studies, but I'm missing a class, so that's where we offer the Virtual Virginia at no cost, so they can take an initial credit course which covers the entire curriculum as a first-time student at no cost as well. And then the step-up to math programs that we have in place also really help with students to become prepared for that, and then more than that, even the AP camp that we offer, again, at no cost, to make sure students are ready for that rigor of an advanced placement course.
For students in the high school clusters that do the virtual two days a week, do we provide devices and internet access for those that do not have that?
Yeah, so we have, when COVID was in play, the division bought about, I think, three thousand personal MiFi devices, we still have those, so we can activate them for a month at a time or two months at a time, so if a student needs internet, we have that, and the summer school site will distribute the Chromebooks on the first day of summer school.
Okay, I figured, but I just wanted to ask.
That's a great question to ask.
Ms. Bassin.
And I have an additional question around slide number fourteen, which, you know, is one of those data points that we've been, you know, asking about, about how students are performing among those who participated in summer school programs and from spring to fall, like, what can, I guess, do you, is this more, is this in line with what the research shows should be expected, or are we ahead, are we kind of below what you would typically see?
I think we're on point, you know, you remember, these numbers are taken from the Stars program, which were students who had failed the year before, and they're coming in because they need to make up that credit or to earn it to get to the next grade level if it's elementary or middle school, or to earn that credit at high school. So to see the numbers where they're improving, where maybe they had been not improving years before, and also knowing that they still had, there was about five weeks after summer school where there was, you know, where they had a summer, and they could have had summer slide then as well. So these, these are, these numbers are consistent with what we saw last summer, and we were pleased with what we saw last summer, and then we did see, again, our fall results were stronger, so we're looking forward to having this summer and seeing good numbers again with the practices we have in place.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Poehl.
My pleasure, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2.05, Discussion and Vote to Approve Initial Bylaws and Contract for New Regional Recovery Program for Region Two.
Good afternoon, Chair Calagero, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, members of the Board. What we have provided to you is an initial contract and bylaws for our recovery program, which we hope to open in August of this school year. We're very, very excited about the program, we knew that you would want to see a copy of the contract and the bylaws, and we are available to answer any questions. Mr. Attorney Cloud has been very engaged with the process, and certainly he is prepared today to address any questions about the contract or the bylaws that you may have. And as you can recall, in January, Dr. Cataldo provided a very comprehensive overview of the program, and I think we did, did we repost that? If we didn't repost it, it's available under Board Docs in January. So didn't necessarily want to re-present that PowerPoint again, but just to remind you that we did present information related to the program.
And you did vote on a resolution?
Already.
In support of proceeding with this towards opening the school. Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bassin.
So are we expected to vote on this, or is this for information?
Do you want to address that?
So I'll let Mr. Cloud address that, how about that? I know he wants you to vote today, but.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was presenting it to you and with Dr. Birdsong, just because, although you have had a slide shoe on the subject, this would give you a more intensive and specific sense of what is coming. This contract could be signed by Dr. Birdsong without coming back to the Board, she has the authority to do that, and it's not necessarily the absolute final, in fact, you may have noticed if you looked at it, there are even some comments and things in there, that's how it was forwarded to me by the chief attorney who is involved in this, which is the attorney for the Virginia Beach Public Schools, and that's because they are taking the lead, and they have also been the recipient of the initial funding from the General Assembly, it went straight to them for the school, rather than to divide it amongst the boards that are going to own it. So it's really today for you to just kind of, again, give a vote of approval to moving forward with the understanding that the final initial bylaw and contract will be substantially similar to this, there may be some minor changes, but there won't be anything significant, or if there's something that I think is significant that gets changed, then I'll come back, you know, we'll come back and talk to you about it. It's mainly, they're really under the gun on this, and August 1st is a tough deadline to meet, and so the idea was you could approve this, and Dr. Birdsong won't sign this tonight, but then as soon as we're ready, we being me and the other attorneys for the other four divisions, it'll be quickly signed, and actually what the Virginia Beach City Attorney, School Board Attorney has told me, what they're asking is the superintendents and others will just sign the signature page and send that to them, so that when, as soon as they're ready, and the different divisions are handling it differently, I think some may go to their boards at the business meeting, but in some cases, their superintendent may just sign the signature page and not even talk to the boards about it further.
Do you have a question? Ms. Bassin, do you have a question?
No, no, I don't right now.
Mr. Inge?
Not so much a question, just a statement, I'm so glad we're doing this, just like Jack said, we're under the gun on this, I am so glad that we are taking and getting ahead of this with our students that are facing substance usage, so I'm proud to definitely, when this comes about, for vote to vote forward, so definitely, this is going to do a lot of great help for our students.
Dr. Martin, did you have a comment? Colonel?
No.
Ms. Moore, Buffalo?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
So, can I get a motion to accept the approved, to a motion to accept the, and approve the initial bylaws and contract for the new regional recovery program for Region Two?
I move that we, that we accept this.
Initial contract.
Initial contract of bylaws for our superintendent to sign for approval.
And to approve the initial bylaws and contract?
Oh, initial bylaws and contract.
For the new regional recovery program.
For the new regional recovery board. I feel like I'm getting sworn in.
Dr. Martin has brought forward the motion, and Ms. Thomas has seconded it. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Colson?
Thomas?
Aye.
DeCalagero?
I was just going to add, eventually, we're calling it Region Two, et cetera, for the purposes of the contract, but it's going to be called the Harbor Hope House.
We share that.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 3.01, Future Agenda Items. What I'd like to do is give each Board member a chance to bring forward anything they would like, so I am going to go around the table. Ms. Bassin, would you like to start?
So, what I had was, you know, the norms and protocols we talked about the last time this agenda topic came up, that we do need to finish reviewing them and adopting them so that we at least have our code of conduct ready to go for our reference. The other topic, not so much, I have two other topics that I would like the Board to consider, is an update on the EELC program, since it's been, we'll be completing our first year of implementation, I'd like an update on, you know, what metrics were put in place to ensure implementation fidelity and how we're asserting impact on student outcomes, and what the measures of success are so that, you know, as we go into Year Two, we know, you know, we can monitor our progress for our students over time, and I don't know if you want me to pause there and see if there's interest before I finish my.
Let's address the norms and protocols, and then the second one, and then we'll.
Yeah, and I raised that at the last Future Agenda Item.
Yes, so I think that we are in agreement already, so that one, that one is good. So an update on the EELC program and metrics fidelity, student outcomes and measures of success is what I have. Did I do a good job with that, or did I miss something?
Yeah, like, you know, where are we in the implementation, and, you know, what are the, yeah, what are the metrics that we are examining to determine the success of those programs, and especially as we're getting ready to start a new one at Southside STEM Academy next year.
Is there interest in getting an update? So let's go around the table.
I would maybe not, like, does anyone not want to get an update on these?
Well, let's just, yes, though.
And let me clarify too, it is for consideration at a time that you and the administration feel that it's appropriate. Yeah, I'm not asking for it next month, I'm just putting it out there for you all to consider when it's appropriate to bring it to us.
Dr. Martin, do you agree that we should get an update? Ms. Buffalo, Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Colonel?
Yes. Yes.
Got it, all right, what is your third topic?
And my third topic is, so we, it's been a couple of years since we've had an update on open campus, but specifically around open campus and our overage for grade, and that's something that we've been talking about for quite some time, you know, previous board, and also I would like to have an update on open campus and our overage for grade population and how we are serving those students, or how we may better serve those students in our school district.
All right, Dr. Martin, do you have any comments?
Any comments?
Our comments, concerns, or just want to say yes, you would like to get the update?
I agree with her, I think those are good topics.
I agree.
I had it.
Question?
Go ahead.
What would we use this information for? I mean, this, being new to the Board, I mean, we get, there's a lot of segments, there's a lot of parts, and we're keeping track of those for decision-making, but this is the first I've heard of the overage and.
And that's probably why, why we need an update.
It's a good idea to get an update, right?
Right, and that's exactly why, so open campus is one of our programs, you know.
No, I know what open campus is, but.
And so part of that originally, when it originally started, it was, it was meant to kind of address some of the overage population who were in the credit recovery kind of period, risk of dropping out, and so, and like where we are currently with that, because we do have an overage population, and we see it every month, you know, and we're getting student appeals and disciplinary hearings, you know, we see that, you know, we have, you know, sixteen-year-olds in seventh or eighth grade, and it's, how do we set our students up for success who may be in those, in those situations where they're overage for grade, and how can our academic programming, how are, how is our academic programming meeting the needs of those students, and kind of connecting that to open campuses, open campus a place where we can enhance and strengthen to provide those services? So I think it's, it would be good for the whole Board to have an understanding of open campus, but also our overage for grade population.
Thank you. I didn't get the connection between overage and, ending with younger, I was thinking the adult program, the adult that Ms. Buffalo is going to talk or speak with, and I was thinking it was more that, and then all of a sudden I didn't really, and I got the connection now, so that's a whole separate program.
Right.
Right, okay, thank you.
So would you like to have an update?
Oh, sure, but let's.
Oh, because you, because we, I was asking, and then Mr. Inge, would you like to have an update?
Oh, we're going this way, okay. Yeah, so I know one of our students at Booker T. had sent us an email, they found them.
Oh, I'm going to come to you for that, but I was just on Tanya's topic.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, I'm good, I support her.
Okay. Dr. Martin, do you have anything you'd like to see added to the agenda?
Yeah, I want to, I'd like to see a board training planned, and regular updates on the school right sizing that our committee is working on, and like to hear more about the transition to the block scheduling for the upcoming school year.
The four-by-four?
Yeah, and did I say this, committee reports, or the community committees that we're, anyone's sitting on to make time for that?
Okay, so you want, let me just make sure I have everything that you said right now, four-by-four, block scheduling, you want updates, and time for committee reports for the committees that we are sitting on?
Yeah, so board training, updates on the right sizing, committee reports, and block schedule transition.
Okay, I think we've agreed to board training, so that is.
Agreed to do it, or have you agreed on a vendor?
I am, I am in contact with greater city schools, great city schools.
Council of great city schools.
Council of great cities, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And so I will be giving an update on that very soon.
Will the administration have input on who you decide to double?
Absolutely. So in terms of regular updates on the steering committee, I reached out to Ken, I didn't reach out to Mr. Inge, but they are playing, they are providing reports, do you want to receive the report, or?
Jason sent the email in.
Yeah, so is that sufficient? Do we need to discuss it at school board meetings, or is the report sufficient?
I think the report is sufficient.
Okay.
Report, Ken? Of course, I sent you a copy.
Yeah, I got both yours.
Sorry, I just misspoke, but if we need more than simply their reports, please let me know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that we have some discussions in front of the public so that they're aware of what's going on as well.
Okay. So are we in agreement that we should have some discussions?
That, or, I mean, I think we're going to, that's naturally going to have to happen, but as far as the reports, maybe, those should be public, right?
Right.
So they should be posted.
So we should post those.
Yeah, I agree with that, having them posted, but I don't, I think we're naturally going to have them be agenda topics as a result of the timeline that we're working with.
How would the Board like, or maybe consider, because he sent one, I sent one, and.
Template.
Yeah, I'd say, so we should work together, is what I'm saying.
Or send it to Ms. Tanner, and she can post it.
All right, there we go.
Well, he was saying the process, they should have some kind of template, you know, the information that they're going to share so they can work together, so they are not both sending.
But not both recreating the wheel.
Right.
Okay, I mean, well, Ms. Tanner can do that too.
Madam Chairman, may I ask, I'd like to ask Dr. Birdsong what she feels may be best, because in the past, I know either the consultants provided, you know, like the update or minutes, took minutes from the meeting, or like, is that something that they're, do you know if they're continuing to do that, or, yeah, taking minutes of the meeting?
Tanner has been asked to take the minutes.
Okay.
Since she is the Board Clerk.
Okay, um, okay, so that's, so going forward, so are we duplicating efforts, I guess?
Well, I think minutes in a report are not necessarily the same thing, I mean, a report is like a high-level summary.
Comes in, what we, what kind of information we want.
Comes in what we, what kind of information we want, you know, out of that report, is, I think. I think we can talk about that, like, we don't have to talk about it right now in, in here, but, you know, we need to think about it, yeah. But I agree on getting a report. I'll just say that.
We wanna set a template for the report that both, that, that both Colonel and I are at, um, to just, just for uniformity, even though we're gonna have the minutes done by Karen?
Yeah, you're getting a double dose.
That's, I feel like there's a double dose.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I felt like duplicated efforts, you know?
Right.
And by all means, I think that we should-
Well, I see a report as a high-level summary, and I see the minutes as getting into the minutia.
Well-
Well, we shouldn't be.
Getting into, exactly.
Cause they're not voting or doing anything in there.
So I'm, so I'm, I'm just envisioning it incorrectly, then. I was thinking of more of them giving us a summary, and then we also had the minutes to refer to if we had, needed more detail about a summary.
So you'd like both?
Uh-
Somewhere in between, maybe?
Somewhere in between, maybe? I, I appreciate the reports that they spent their time creating.
Oh, yeah, I thought that was very helpful.
Maybe our, our reports should be part of the minutes, or, I mean, that's the rec, or if you wanna call it a record.
Or, or could their reports be the, you know, be the minutes? I don't know.
I don't know. I think, I think we still need Ms. Tanner to properly take, take the minutes.
Have an idea.
Okay, 'cause then I think that that's, that seems to be duplicating efforts, but I don't, I don't know. I, I am not gonna die on that.
So-
Whatever you guys decide is-
So, so they, well, there's only one more meeting. They've already done the work for the first meeting.
Right, which were, they were great.
So what are, our marching orders for the second meeting would be not to submit a report, or submit a very brief, high-level report?
I, I like what they did. That was sufficient for me.
I told him I was gonna give him a compliment, so here it comes.
Oh, okay, give that to me.
His, his report was so detailed. I mean-
And I like that.
Yeah, I did, too. I'm going, wow.
And for me-
He must write faster than I do, 'cause I didn't have that extensive detail that he had. But we, we, we should work, I think, when there's two people, you work together, one, one, one report, and, and both have to contribute to it, you know? So I contributed by giving all the, uh, what do you call it, the handouts that, that, that we had, those items that I attached to mine. And he gave the detail, I gave the, the supporting documents.
So I guess their marching is order, I'm sorry, Ms. Buffalo.
So the only, I, I agree with Tanya. I think we're doing two, and Ms. Thomas, we're doing double work. If they're giving us a overview of what happened in the committee, we're, they're not taking any action in the meeting. So I don't, I don't get why Ms. Tanner is taking minutes, and they're doing their report.
Yeah, and that's what I-
You all, that report you all put together was very high-level, explained it all. I just don't understand why Ms. Tanner-
You guys are okay with that.
I can explain why.
Okay.
Because we were unaware that they were going to provide a report. And so in order to support this work for the board, we wanted to be proactive to make sure there were not any questions about, we don't know what's going on. So therefore, that the administration asked Ms. Tanner to provide minutes. And we were unaware that Mr. Inge and Mr. Doctor, Colonel Paulson would be-
Doctors better, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Paulson. Colonel Paulson would be providing a summary. So at the end of the day, we wanna make sure you have the information that you need. That's, that's all we care about. So you all can decide how you want that information, either through minutes, or either through their work.
I, I have a legal question. Do, do we need minutes for, Jack?
Yes.
Do we need minutes for, in case there's any future dispute on what happened with the committee?
Uh, I'd, I'd say it's a good idea to have minutes. I mean, if, if you're going to have a report, then the person doing the minutes can bear that in mind and do less. There's no real standard for how complete or thorough minutes.
So we have one more meeting.
Right.
That's the whole point.
So we, so it's not, this is not a long-term haul for anybody, so we will keep the minutes. I appreciated your reports. I would like to see another report, maybe it just has to be one, instead of you guys duplicating efforts. We could do a Google Doc together.
Yeah, that's cool. That sounds good.
And we will get those reports posted, as well as the minutes are posted.
But if I, if I might, what, one, this discussion about reports would reply, apply to all of our committees?
Well, that's actually, and that's, I've got that right here.
Okay, thank you.
Four-by-four block scheduling, you'd like, you'd like to see us get an update on where that stands?
Yes, we transition into it, yeah.
Agreement?
I agree, yeah.
I agree.
And then committee reports for the committees that you serve on, we should, I think we've discussed this already, that people should be providing them.
Right, and we're talking about the standing committees, the board committees. So, and for some of ours, I, I think, I don't, I think we can, um, you know, policy is kind of, it happens during our meeting, but, um, I think it'd be a report that's posted-
Board docs.
In board docs, yeah.
Everyone aware? All right, we're in agreement. Ms. Moore Buffalo, anything that you'd like to see added to the agenda?
Took my EELCs and my open campus, so, uh, yeah, you did. I had to scratch them out. But I will say that, for consideration, in the future, that I would like to see our division-wide technology plan for our school division.
Okay, agreement?
I agree.
Anybody?
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Moore Buffalo? Or did you have a comment?
I, I question, is, is this a new request of the administration?
I, I think, I, I don't, I don't know. I can't even speak to it. It's just something maybe the board has not had in, had in a sen-
In a while, yeah.
Yeah, so it's something that would probably be good to be updated on.
And that would be, I would leave it to you all to determine if that's a report, or, you know, a presentation, yeah.
Buffalo?
Um, nothing extra at this time.
I know, they covered so much.
Yes.
I don't have anything at this time. Uh, Colonel?
Um, I'll reserve my comments for another time, when we get-
All right.
We're going along real well here, so.
Mr. Inge?
Oh, wow, okay. All right, good. So, um, just for consideration, minds are, um, very quick. Um, you all may have received an email, or you actually did, it was, um, there from one of our students, um, at Booker T. Washington. They found a great piece of, of blanket tapestry that shows the rich heritage, um, history of Booker T. I would, and he's asked to come present that. I would love for him to come and present that to the board on the 21st. I think it'll be a great opportunity to showcase us, to see Booker T. Washington's history, if we don't know it. And then also for anyone that comes, so that they can see this school, and just see that, just the remarkable talent that's there. I just think it'd be something worthwhile coming just to present to the board.
What do we think?
Highlight students.
Yeah.
We're highlighting a school, and it's history.
Is there a schedule, like, is the schedule already made for highlighting student activities?
Could that be under the chair? Could that be under the, the, uh-
That would be the clerk.
The clerk's report?
That's what, I mean, that's where it would be. That's what I'm asking, if that's-
I, I don't-
If there's room for it on our agenda anywhere.
We can make room. It's not gonna take long.
Right, yeah.
And this is the last business meeting before school, and so.
That'll be great.
If I, real quick, while you're writing, are you talking about a presentation? I mean, that they're, they're gonna give the history of it, like, about this. I, I read the, the-
Yeah, so he's, so he's gonna give history of the blanket, not the entire school.
Yeah, what we doing?
Right, but it's, it's, it's history that was written by, I guess, some, um, it was, it was made by, uh, his father, I, I can't remember the, the, it's, it's not a student object. It's, 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 it's a history of the school.
Correct.
Right, okay, all right, all right. I thought maybe you said nuke.
I don't see any reason that we can't. I don't see any, so we will add that to the clerk's report.
Awesome, thank you.
We do, we do probably need to reach out to him and set parameters on how much time it can take.
I'm excited for that presentation.
Pretty cool, yeah.
All right, that went very well. Good job.
Will you finish, Jason?
Um-
You have another one?
Actually, um, no. No, that one's not, it's something we can discuss in closed session.
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess, well, maybe let me ask the question, you tell me why I need to put, I'm still in there. I got some Similac behind my ears here. All right. Um, so I would like to see, for example, um, the tennis courts, um, from Booker T. Washington, they were opened up this past weekend, which was great. I commend, um, Booker T. Washington for the tennis courts, and every person who has made sure that this has happened, our city partners. But I did not know about it until I went to a breakfast. That's, that's the only way I knew about it, and so to go, if I didn't know, there would have never been a school board member there, and nobody there was from the administration, but, um, the A.D. for, um, yeah.
The date that I was given was not accurate.
Yeah, so we gotta make sure, anything that's going on with Norfolk Public Schools that is something dealing with commemorating our students, the schools, the school board should know, the administration should know, so that we can have some representation there.
Well, it seems like there was communication issues, 'cause you weren't fully aware.
It was another day. It wasn't that Saturday.
Okay.
I think the date I was given was a Friday.
Okay.
I think it was just, and I'm sure it was innocent.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think there was any malice behind it. Nah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm glad you-
Yeah, but I'm glad you brought that.
So I'm glad you found out, and you-
Yeah, I had a, had a great time. That was an awesome time.
Those courts are beautiful.
They are, they are.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Inge?
Uh, no, yeah, good to go for now.
All right. Can I get a motion to go into closed executive session?
I move that we go into executive closed session.
I second.
So, Ms. Moore Buffalo, oh, is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Moore Buffalo has brought forth the motion, and Ms. Thomas has seconded the motion to go into executive closed session. Ms. Tanner, would you please take, call the roll?
I'm gonna read the motion first, for you.
Doesn't she have to read?
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna read the motion. Move that the members of the school board of the City of Norfolk into a closed meeting for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection 2.2-371118, 3711A1 of the, of the act. The subject of this portion of the closed meeting is the discussion of possible discipline, demotion, or termination of specific personnel, consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation, or regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the act. The subject of this portion of the closed meeting is the matter set out above in subsection A of this motion. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas? DeKalb Jero?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
There we go.
Uh, can I get a motion to come out of closed executive session?
I move we come out of executive closed session.
Second.
I third.
Ms. Uh, Moore Buffalo has brought forth a motion, and Mr. Inge has seconded the motion. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
I'm gonna read the resolution first. Oh, yeah.
Oh, Ms. Tanner, please read the resolution.
A resolution certifying executive meeting of the school board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the school board of the City of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, nor therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the City of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Inge?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
DeKalb Jero?
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you all for coming this evening, and this school board work session is now adjourned.